Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our, one of our special board meetings, which we've been holding all summer and looks like into the fall for October 26, 2021. I'd like to call the meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. So while these meetings we set back in the beginning were supposed to be kind of a more informative discussion and everything, we're still trying to do that, but in addition, we do have to conduct business because the wheels of the bus got to keep moving. So we'll just keep rolling along here in terms of doing what we need to do. And the first thing I'd like to do is have a, the public hearing, public comment and public hearing on the community development, public, uh, community development block grant public hearing for 2022. I'd like to make a motion to open a public comment and a public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Okay. The purpose, the community development, you need some notes here. Community development block grant is, comes out of Dutchess County, and every year it comes with kind of some rules and regulations that go with it. This block grant is really a portion, proportion to the areas in the village where there's low to moderate income, or it can be used to remove inhibitors, you know, for the disabled, the elderly, et cetera. So while we want to get public input from you, we have some suggestions, like to talk. So I'm going to open the meeting now to turn it over to the public for a public comment section on any suggestions for the block grant. The limit by each of them is $150,000, just so you know, so it's not an unlimited amount of money which we can apply for. And to remember, several years ago, we applied for a sidewalk grant over on West Chestnut Street, and that grant took us to be able to raise a lot more money, which we were not able to raise, so we pulled out of the process in 2018 or 19, whenever that was, I forget. But now it's up again after COVID, so I'm turning the floor to you. If anybody has any comments in regard to suggestions for using, applying for $150,000 Okay, hearing none. The board has been also talking about this, and we mentioned this on, I think we mentioned, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to remove this a little bit, I can't breathe right now. We're going, we've been talking about what we think would be a good avenue for the application. And one of those would be to remove inhibitors for those who are disabled or elderly, or have trouble accessing our sidewalks from the street intersections. And that process removes, improving or replacing or updating the curb ramps that go from the sidewalk to the street. It is a pre, kind of a prerequisite to do if you want to work on sidewalks, you got to also do these. This would re, this qualifies for community development block grant 2022 as removing inhibitors. And so we're, we are offering that to the floor. I'll open it back up if there's anybody who has comments about that section. Kathy?
I think it's a great idea.
There's one vote. Trustee Lewitt has been collecting some information, and we have our village engineer here, Randy Nelson, who can also help educate us on what we can do to be able to make this work. So I'm going to keep this into the comment section so that we're moving forward on it.
Okay, so, I can just speak a little louder. So one of the suggestions we had was to take a look at the sidewalks and the curb crossings, the curb cuts around the central business, business district. We have a lot of uneven curbs, and a lot of them, a bunch of them are not ADA compliant. So on Friday, Rob Sasser and myself, Rob is with Time Bond, took a walk through the village. We walked from, um, uh, from Center Street, excuse me, walked from South Street to Livingston and Oak to Center Street, just to take in that area, and thought about, looked at, looked at the various curb cuts and thought, what can we do? The curb cuts over here at Center and East Market Street are not good, but we are planning to do some sort of water main renovation in that area. And Rob's suggestion was, don't start improving those intersections now if you're going to be tearing up the pavement in, in the next year or so. So leaving those two out, we identified two intersections where we thought there was really some serious barriers. The first one was at Livingston Street, at Montgomery Street, basically, the, if you say, walking from Gigi to Terrapin, across the mouth of, of Livingston there. Right now, there is, there's no formal side, there's no formal.
Crosswalk.
A crosswalk. And there is some curb cuts, but the curb cuts, especially on the south side, are probably not, are not ADA compliant. So it would be a chance to go back, fix both sides of that, and create a crosswalk, and that would really help pedestrian traffic flow north, south, up and down the street. The other place we looked at and identified was Garden Street at, at West Market Street. Basically, that's an old curb, it has no ADA, um, accommodations whatsoever, and is kind of, it's been kicked over by plows and such like that. So that would be a place where the sidewalk would, or at least the, the aprons there would need to be rebuilt, and, and put those there. Those were the two highest priority ones that we, we found. We did look at other ones throughout the village, a lot of them right in the center of the village are actually in good shape, which is a nice thing to say. We also thought that if there was additional funds, that one thing that does need to happen is that the tactile strips, which if you're familiar with the ADA curbs, there's usually like a rumble strip, we should have those between, on the sidewalks at various curb cuts. So we currently don't have those. So if we have additional funds left over from, from those first two projects, then we'd look at installing, starting to install those tactile rumble mats on sidewalks at the entrance and exit to the municipal parking lot. So that was his suggestion, that was what we, what we thought. I don't have big numbers, I know that last time when we looked at doing all four corners over at Parsonage and East Market Street, that was $100,000. So, okay, I think Randy may have some, some additional, additional facts and figures.
Yeah, it will help the discussion. We did, we talked to a handful of contractors and do some quick pricing, and typically what we're finding is it's per ramp about $10,000. So we need to do that math and figure out how far a ramp would go, and that's, that's not per intersection, so a four-way intersection would cost $40,000. You know, two ramps like at Harvard Street or Livingston, that would be $1,000, just again, not number.
And does that include, how far back does that go? Because one of the issues Rob and I were looking at was the fact that a lot of the slopes seem to be too steep coming off the ramp, and also to create a smoother pathway.
Yeah, so we would work from the existing entertainment back and one section of concrete sidewalk back, so it would, it would typically span the corner ramp area and then one section of, kind of cornering either direction.
Okay, that's for the $10,000?
Yeah.
That's a good price.
And prices, I mean, I'm not a gaveller.
I'm sure.
COVID prices are kind of all over the place right now.
I'm sure. So that would, that would at least, seems like we have enough, it's reasonable to at least do the, the first four, and then look at the, the mumble strips by the parking lot. And I know for sure that one of the sidewalk to curb cut connections is way too steep at the, at the municipal lot, so that's going to probably be closer to what would be a full, a full replacement. And the other nice thing that I learned from Rob is that now, if you look around town, you see the old mumble strips, they frequently get worn down. Their current design status is, they now make these replaceable, so they're usually just screwed in or they're in a frame. So if you have your concrete there and they get worn down, it's pop out, put another one in. So it's an improvement in design.
Do they have to be, do they have to be bright yellow?
Not that I'm aware of.
They have a variety of colors.
That's kind. I was just thinking of the historic districts.
We have, the ones that I think of are sort of a brick red.
Yeah, terracotta.
Yeah, terracotta.
There's actually a full palette of colors you can choose from.
Okay, cool.
So that was what, in our, in our walk, that's what we identified as, as probably as the best uses for the, for, for the funds, and the most targeted, at least, for creating better traffic flow in some of the districts.
Just to remind everybody the timeline for this, the reason we're doing this now is, we need to have a letter of intent into the county by November 10th. So this is a requirement to hold a public hearing prior, so then we can start working on a letter of intent. And then after that follows a series of due dates. December 1st, our application is due. December, December 16th is the CDOC review is done. January 3rd, the action plan and the 30-day comment period begins. January 12th, a public hearing on the action plan. February 3rd, processing on the public hearing. February 5th, submission of 2021 action plan. And March 1st, the program year begins. So that's the timeline which we would then, if we were successful, be able to move ahead, on March 1st.
Do you know if getting any letters from the county or from community groups would help support our application?
I think so. Right. I see a head nod over there.
It's county funding, so they can't offer letters of support, but other groups have the ability to offer support.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we, I forgot the matching issue, are we?
This is non-matching, it's $150,000, we know.
Nice.
Maximum, that's the maximum per municipality.
Are they looking for a token contribution from us, or do they, does that even matter?
In the past, we've done, we've usually said we'll do the demolition work, so we had in-kind, some in-kind labor that was, that was added to it. That's, that's how, that's certainly what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I don't think it's a blank. You can go for full, or, but you can offer as well. Sorry, so I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment section, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Now, our public hearing is still open, again, for the board, for the public hearing section. It looks like the majority opinion is to go for ramps, right? Does anybody agree?
Yes.
Go with that?
Sounds like a good idea.
Any discussion on the ramps, or, as Rick mentioned, he mentioned Livingston Street, Garden Street, and the municipal lot, plus replacing other rubber mats as needed to, for the funding. Does anybody have a suggestion or a different curb they would like to recommend? Do you have a favorite curb?
I'm assuming that these are all, I'm just trying to remember, these are all curbs that are concrete, they're not bluestone, right?
Correct.
Okay. So the bluestone curbs are a separate issue that we're continuing to think about.
Bluestone curbs, there is some bluestone right at the corner by Market Street, but it's kind of a real amalgam, the telephone pole and some pavement and some bluestone.
Yeah, it's a mess.
It's kind of a riot of, of materials.
Okay. And how quickly do we have to, does this have to be deployed in the same year that we get the money? Yes, okay. I was just wondering if we could have.
Yet a year to make, to do the improvement.
If you have one year, you can extend it, and the county prefers you move quickly on it. Now, it's just the agenda, funds come directly from the federal government as a block ramp to the county, and so the actual award date is tied to the federal budget, and so the, the schedule that the mayor outlined is the intended schedule, but sometimes it's a little bit later. So depending on when the money comes in, we can look at the schedule for completing the work. But the design effort is fairly small.
Yep.
There is DOT permitting that would be required for any of the programs that would front on state highway.
Right, not agreeable.
The DOT is pretty agreeable to working with the village in instances where you're removing our technical barriers.
Okay. I mean, the only reason I asked about that was because if we are going to be thinking about this water main on Center Street sooner rather than later, then we could apply for the grant for the, for that, for those curb cuts, and just hold on to it until we.
Well, here's the date, you, you cannot begin work before March 1st.
Yep.
2022, and act, activities allocated funds or this application must be completed, and all funds expended within 20 months from the start date, or by October 31st, 2023.
I think, I think I'd rather hold it into whatever project we're doing at the time, and get these done. These, I think these are actually more critical than the four over there.
Yeah, no, I, I get that, but like, could we hold the funding for those four for when we do Center Street and East Market? It's for when we do Center.
But then you're not doing all the ones that we've just identified, you're going to take money out of this to do that, is what you're saying.
Well, could we add, I mean, like, it didn't sound like it was $150,000 worth of curb cuts.
Well, if I, my name is, offer for, discussion purposes, one thing that the board should think about is intervening behind, just prioritizing a list of programs, and then when we go to bid, we can bid each one as a unit bid, and then depending on how the funding comes in, you know, you could kind of match.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's, that's what Rob and I basically sort of said, high priority, low priority.
Okay.
That's how we looked at it.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept and proceed with the application for, applying for the community development block grant 2022 for curb ramps to be identified on Livingston Street, Garden Street, at West Market Street, the municipal lot, and to replace rubber ramps where needed, as funding is allowed.
Second.
Thank you, Rick. All right, any other discussion? All right, so with that, we also, part of the requirement is to have a resolution authorizing the submission of the 2022 development block grant. So I'll read the resolution. Activity is ADA curb replacements, whereas the village of Rhinebeck is participating in the 2022 Dutchess County Community Development Block Grant Consortium, and wears input from citizens, we got vote over there, you know, contribute to safety, replacing the curves with ADA approved, access will allow for future sidewalk to be done, and meet the ADA standard. Not having ADA curbs in place is an inhibitor or a barrier that meets a criteria for the community development block grant application. Whereas this agreement from the county that walkability, bikeability are important to village residents, and this project meets all of that criteria. Now therefore be resolved that the 2022 application to the Dutchess County Community Development Block Grant program for the above referenced activity is approved, be it further resolved that the submission of the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development is hereby authorized. I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, next. A continued discussion on what was brought up our last meeting, on the gates that were originally at Astor Drive. And Mike, I think you have some additional information which you can share with the board, because we had said we would try to move forward with that at this meeting.
Right. In our last meeting, the, just to recap for everybody, the board, trustees had accepted the gates being donated by the Verilli family that had once stood at the entrance to Astor Drive, but there was a condition that the location where those would be placed would be acceptable to the Verilli family. What the Verilli family is proposing, what I am proposing, in my role as village historian here, is to locate those gates so that the one end of each gate would be on the east side of the two pillars that stand at the entrance to Astor Drive. And by the east side, I'm talking about the side that faces Montgomery Street, that faces the medical building, not in the other direction down Astor Drive. So one end would be not actually mounted on the pillars, even though there are still the original pieces of hardware on which the, those gates had been mounted at one time, but rather sinking some posts, heavy-duty metal posts into concrete, just a small distance on the east side of each of those two pillars, mounting one end of the post that otherwise would have been mounted on the pillars on these two steel posts, opening the gates wide open so that their far end doesn't touch the stone walls, but almost touches them. And at that open end, that some kind of device is sunk into the ground, the metal gates attached to that, and the, that only village staff would be able to loosen those, unsecure those. The, there was a question raised at, my, my basis for determining before the last meeting that those were indeed on village property was using Dutchess County parcel access, and I was rightfully reminded that sometimes that is not the most accurate source. As a result of which, I did go and check out, we, we do have several surveys, one done in February 1965, another done in 1966. They were in connection with the transfer of the property from the Astors to Beekman Acres. Beekman Acres, well, actually, there, there were several transactions there, but the, the latest transactions were the ones to Beekman Acres. Subsequently, some of that property became Victor Wein-Garten's Woods Project, now known as the Woods, now the Woods Homeowners Association owns land to the south side of Astor Drive, and on the north side of Astor Drive, Baptist Church. We did verify in the surveys, and I actually have them right there, they're on loan from the archives of the Rhinebeck Historical Society, but two of those surveys are actually, have been posted online for some years, they're in the Teal map collection. The third survey, which we haven't scanned, but is also there, is sheet two of two of the map that was filed by the, by the Woods at the time that the subdivision was finally approved by the planning board here in 1983. All three of those maps are in sync with regard to how they show the area right at the junction of Astor Drive and Montgomery Street. The amount of land that was donated to the village that is referenced in those three surveys was a total of 2.08 acres, and those surveys show exactly how that was plotted out. An amount was also, since the line between the village and the town is actually just west of the Woods, there was a corresponding amount also donated to the town of Rhinebeck, so that Astor Drive could be a public street from Montgomery Street down to River Road. Prior to that, it had been a privately owned by the Astor family, even though they did permit the public to use that road most of the time. There are a few occasions on which, if we are to read the Gazette stories as being totally accurate, that the, and we have no reason to doubt them, but that there were folks that decided to come down Astor Drive and paid no attention to the fact that one of the Astors was there coming the other way and pushed him right off the road, and they decided to close the gates at that point, and you can close for relatively short, I think, a few weeks, and reopen them. So to come back to question here, it does appear from those surveys, and I can lay them out on the table there if anybody wants to look at them more closely, that the land that is at the junction, that everything on the Montgomery side of the stone walls is village property. And at the, I think if there were, one of the other questions that didn't come up at the trustees, the last trustees meeting, but has occurred to me, was what about the drainage? There are two catch basins located right at that intersection, you don't want anything to interfere with those catch basins. The, the blue signs are right there, but it was unclear to me just where they are and where they might be with respect to the gates. There is one catch basin on the south side of where Astor Drive meets Montgomery Street, and it's on the east side of the gates. It's about 10 feet, it's a little more than 10 feet, from the pillar on that side. The gates, the half gate, the one half that would be mounted on that side, actually both of them, are 77 inches long, it's four feet less than, it's a little over six feet. So you've got four feet distance between the end of the gate and the beginning of the catch basins, so the gates are not going to be interfering in any way, and they, they wouldn't anyway, since our intent is that they be mounted so that they are almost at the walls. But that shouldn't be an issue. The catch basins, actually, we found, it's very interesting, the catch basins, as you know, need to be designed by village engineers, and the village engineer in 1914 was Frank Teal. We found in the archives the actual original design for one of the catch, that one catch basin on the, on the south side. There is also a catch basin on the north side. It is much farther away from the pillars, it's almost in Montgomery Street. There's a sidewalk there that comes right down to, to the intersection, and where that sidewalk meets the intersection is that catch basin, and it's considerably more distance from the far end of that southern gate than on the opposite side of the street. I'm sure I could go on, but if there are questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. Yes?
The post for the mounting, is the, the owner seemed to be in, in that kind of industry? Could they give us a spec on that? Because if we go out and get a generic steel post from a hardware store, it might really not look good at all.
Is this, is this it?
Yeah, that post?
Yeah.
Like, could we find, could he give us a tip on what to get? I guess that's my question.
His intent, and I believe that's in the estimate.
It was.
Oh, it's in the estimate?
That was, that was in the $6,900 plan.
Oh, he just wants us to do.
The mount, the mounting hardware, the only thing that we would do would be help dig the holes and pour the concrete.
Okay, got it, that's perfect then.
That's, we discussed at the last meeting, yeah.
Yeah, good.
One of the things that, at the time that the holes are dug, that we would want to be sure of, and I'm fairly certain it wouldn't be a problem, but is that where those, that the drain line, that the water line actually runs, looks to me right down the center of the street. There is an iron pin referred to in, in one of the surveys, that actually would be located exactly where the water turnoff is located, right in the, right, almost in the, it's not in the middle of Montgomery Street, but if you come out Astor Drive, and you've actually come far out into where Montgomery Street by itself is, right in that midpoint is the water line, and that. And that water line appears to run right down the middle of Astor Drive. The other issue would be, I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to sink a hole and puncture the water line, obviously. You obviously, you also don't want to damage the drainage system. It looks like the drain for, if Frank Teal's design for that drain is still accurate, it may not be, some of those have been changed over the past 100 years. That that drain would go southwesterly from the drain, actually underneath the stone wall. And I haven't seen any plans for the other catch basin, but it would be important to verify that wherever those holes are sunk. And our recommendation is that they be sunk very close to the pillars themselves so that so that you have the appearance, looking at the gates, that they're actually still mounted on the pillars. But you don't want them so close to the pillars that if, as we've heard reports, that snowplows occasionally damage those pillars, you don't want stones in those pillars. Somehow dislocating the support post for the gates.
Can you make us a question? Would it be, would it be an idea to have the Historical Society stake out the location for where the gates would be mounted? And then the contractors should do a digsafe New York call before they do any subsurface work, which would trigger utilities coming out and mark? That's a requirement for any digging for any of us?
Right.
Just something that they should do.
We'd be glad to stake that out.
Great. Good idea, Ben.
I have one concern and one concern only. The stone walls there are curved.
Yes.
They're curved. The gate is straight.
Right.
Who's gonna open the gate and mow and maintain that little piece, that little half-moon space that goes that goes back there?
I mean, if I were the maintenance person, what I would do, I mean, our intent is.
Who is the maintenance person?
The gates are not actually going to be touching ground. Is that you have a weed whacker that very carefully used so that it gets that area grassed.
So even though right now it it is owned by the village, the village doesn't maintain that area. So we would need to work something out with the people who are already maintaining it.
And out of courtesy, we've reached out to both entities.
Yep.
That were there, and both of them had said.
Great.
Please proceed.
Great. Oh, fantastic.
Both of Baptist Church and Woods Homeowners Association.
Fantastic.
Now, who does the mowing or whatever? Maybe we should consider doing that going forward as we mount these. But it's a weed whacker.
Right.
Get it.
Right.
Yeah, but Rick is right. There there will be a space that's kind of in that triangle where it's curved and you've got the straight gate, where it's going to be a little challenging getting that grass. You don't want vines later on impeding the appearance.
You need to make the gates open or something. But that was my, that was my only concern, keeping that area neat. That was really, that was my only concern.
Okay.
So Mike, I'd like to thank you for all the work that you've done in not only examining the gates, getting a quote for getting the gates repaired, working out a plan for how they should be mounted, where they should be mounted. The, you know, and everything you and Nick Staley and everybody else who has contributed to making this work. I'd like to make a motion that adding on to our motion of accepting the gates and paying for the restoration, that we now move forward with a plan to actually place the gates as defined tonight at both pillars on separate stanchions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Any discussion?
This is great.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mike. Well done.
Thanks, deputies. I, you know, our goal is to preserve and promote local history.
Yeah.
I couldn't be happier.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I'm glad you're our historian. Lydia, outdoor dining update.
Outdoor dining update. So all of the state and county emergency regulations that were put into place to address COVID have expired or otherwise been lifted. So we have lost our authority to suspend our own zoning laws that have allowed us to do the expanded outdoor dining, the sign sort of changes that we've been doing for the last 18 months, as outlined in our emergency regulations. Both of the state and the county, they've already expired, but they are not planning on enforcing the expiration of those emergency regulations until November 1st. So basically, all municipalities have been told that they have until November 1st to revert back to pre-COVID zoning, however it looked, for dining, retail, et cetera, et cetera, signage before, you know, the state liquor authority is going to start showing up on people's doorsteps and other other problems. So our Department of Transportation permit expires on November 1st, so the Jersey barriers will be removed on November 1st. I strongly suggest to all of the restaurants that they revert back to their state liquor authority, whatever, what?
Bounded areas.
Yes, bounded areas, so that nobody gets into trouble. Our own zoning does not allow for tables on municipal property, which is the sidewalks. So all tables on municipal property need to be removed. And basically, we're back to where we were. Given the popularity of outdoor dining, however, the next thing we're going to be talking about is the comprehensive plan resolution. But we are going to be continuing the conversation on how to, this was a very interesting test run for us. I mean, you know, I'm saddened that it was triggered by COVID, but it was a very interesting test run for us to experience what outdoor, what expanded outdoor dining looked like in the village of Rhinebeck. So we do plan on examining how our zoning laws and our downtown area can be reconfigured to allow for outdoor dining on a more permanent basis. That, obviously, it is a zoning question, and so it will take the time that zoning questions take. Nobody is sneaking anything on anybody. But I am warning you that this is a conversation that is going to be happening at the village level as we take the information that we learned in the last 18 months and and try and fold it into something that villagers seem to have very much enjoyed and to have our zoning laws reflect that. So this is both for restaurants, retail, I mean, everyone who had expanded opportunities during these emergency regulations. It is all ending on November 1st. So I'm not quite sure how many different ways to say this, but that's the last time I'm going to do it. The village will send out an email. Martina and I will probably go for a walk this week and talk to all of the retailers and restaurateurs about this. But that is, that is what's going on. And our regulations automatically expire at the end of, at midnight on October 31st. So it all works quite well with everything. And it also works out well that November 1st is a Monday. So we have one more weekend of outdoor dining fun, and then it all goes away. And this includes, by the way, the pocket park at CVS. That is an entirely separate issue, but just while we're talking about all of this stuff. Rhinebeck Responds did a wonderful job working with CVS and the owners of that land to create that pocket park. There are ongoing conversations between those three entities. And we do hope that that pocket park will remain part of the urban landscape of the village. But that is not up to the village. That is between CVS and the owners of the land. We are doing what we can to support that process and to encourage that process. But it is not publicly owned land, and so therefore, there is very little that we can do other than cheerlead from aside. I think that just about covers it.
So let's talk a little bit about the barriers.
Yes.
The Jersey barriers.
Yes.
Can you mention, so the county and where we're doing, what we're doing?
Oh, so yes, the, we own those Jersey barriers, all of our colorful barriers. So the county is generously moving them for us on the morning of November 1st. We will release some information about the logistics around that. And they're ours. So in the future, we have no equipment to move them. So, you know, if we want to use them again, they're going to live at our highway garage, probably. Yeah, they're going to live at our highway garage. But if we want to use them in the future, we could probably work with the county to move them again. But we now have 10 or so.
14.
Oh, yeah, 14 of the big concrete guys. And obviously, the the smaller water-filled ones, which are much easier to move. So we might end up using them for Sinterklaas. Who knows?
14 decorated.
Yes, 14 decorated ones.
The the water-filled ones are those easier to be moved by our.
Yes, yeah, the, our guys can move the water-filled ones because you just drain the water and put them on the back of a truck.
Okay. The, are the, are the restaurants in particular, are they going to be surprised? Or we were already talking about, you know.
I know.
Moving indoors.
We were already talking about, and I've spoken to a bunch of the restaurants. We have two of them, at least two of them, here today, Lobita Bistro and Market Street. I don't think they're going to be, they're not surprised. I think they're disappointed.
Yeah.
And if, can I, you know, are they, if you all want to say anything.
Absolutely.
Here's your chance.
Yeah, if you do, I just, you know, Lucian or Joe just come up and, yes.
Oh, yes. It's so the TV camera can pick you up.
Yeah, and and everybody can hear you then.
It's nice that you supply hands and sanitizer. All right. Well, so if you don't know, my partners and I own Market Street. In addition to the business, we also own the property there, 19 West Market Street. So we're both business owners and also property owners in the village. First and foremost, I just wanted to thank the village government as well as the community because had everybody not agreed to allow us to do what we did over the last two years, I can say for us, because I look at the numbers all the time, we definitely would have been bankrupt. And, you know, on March 15th of 2020, we had to, across our four businesses, lay off 110 people. In Rhinebeck, we had to lay off 35. By that summer, we were able to hire back about 75% of those people in an environment where nobody really knew what was safe and what wasn't. So we, at Market Street, chose to just serve outside, and it definitely saved our business. Takeout was good, but it doesn't really pay the bills, to be honest. I felt, and I certainly got some of this feedback from some of our friends in retail and certainly some of the community members, that it seemed as though having those cafes in town created a little more life in the village, also slowed down some of the people driving through those roads in and out tend to see a lot of speeding. And I certainly noticed people driving a little slower with with their cars, which I thought made it a little more pedestrian friendly, which I thought was good for the village. I know the barriers were not attractive, but again, we appreciated them. And I think that if there were to be a discussion about this moving forward, obviously, everybody would be able to collaborate on how to make those cafes much more improved and more attractive. I think anything that comes about in the middle of a pandemic is going to be a little ramshackle. But after that, I would imagine we could all, as a community, as village government, as retail and business owners, come up with a plan that worked for everybody. So I would hope that we could do that. I also think, and this is just an idea to throw into the hopper, I know that the village has suffered from parking infrastructure problems. And although it might seem counterintuitive for me to promote giving up some of that parking for outdoor cafes as a means to improve our parking, I think there's a, there's a way for us to do it. It it would make sense economically for these businesses to pay a permitting fee to have these cafes moving forward. And if that benefit of those funds went directly towards the expansion and improvement of parking in the village, I thought that would be a good way for one hand to wash the other. So that's it, really. Again, thank you for letting us do it. I hope there's an opportunity for us to at least have a discussion about doing it in the future as a village. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucian. Thanks.
Joe, do you want to come up? Come on up, Joe.
Hello, I'm Joseph Deluva, the chef owner of Lobita Bistro. I also would like to echo thanking, thanking the quick thinking and the proactive stance that the government took to to help salvage and and keep us productive as as a restaurant. It was, it was a traumatic thing. You know, one day, we changed from, you know, being very alive to to having, you know, huge hardships, sort of way. And and they were very proactive. You guys were very proactive in helping us, communicative and and physically. So that was really, that was wonderful, you know. I mean, the thing, we, we, it was, I'm going to repeat a little bit of Lydia's, that it was kind of a crazy experiment to have have the outdoor dining. But I think it went well. I mean, I think it added a lot of life to the town. I think it gave a European feel. We got a lot of great feedback from people. Very, very few negative responses that we feel, as as we did, you know, through through the time of it. But, you know, I think, I'm going to go on the parking thing a little bit. I have, you know, I have an idea on West Market Street that I think is a great idea. I think in the past, there was angled parking on West Market Street. And that would, that would increase parking right away, the amount of parking at an angle. And it would also reduce the amount of distance that pedestrians have to travel across. Because if you go to other towns like that do have angled parking, you know, there's a platform there that the pedestrians are able to go that's that's accomplished by the thing. And then they have to just walk a little across. Because I always feel like Market Street's a little, you know, crazy. I know I'm giving them all off the subject. But I think it is a balance of that, you know, of the of the Jersey, you know, protective things that that did distract away from parking. And parking is always an issue. But I'd really like to see, you know, a transition into some sidewalk parking. I mean, sidewalk tables for us, you know. I mean, for 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 people that don't have that outdoor dining, I think it would be beautiful. You know, even if we could just keep the sidewalk, you know, next to the restaurant without all that stuff. I mean, I think, you know, it was a little discombobulated sometimes with all the partitions, you know, and to maintain that parking in front and the and the viewing of retail businesses next to us. But still allow the sidewalk parking. We were able to, you know, accomplish five feet of distance between where people were dining and where the tape, where the where the trees were. So, but I mean, that's kind of, you know, it really appreciated, you know, as as the, you know, keeping, keeping businesses viable in town through through this whole thing. And, you know, thank you, Lydia. Thank you. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Jess.
Thanks.
Thanks, Joe.
Is this a public comment only for the restaurant owners?
No, if you want to comment, we opened it up.
I'd like to agree that.
Announce who you are.
Sorry, my name is Kathleen. I'm a resident of the village. And I think that it was great that the village did come together and help all the businesses when they could, as they did. I feel that in my own personal opinion, the second year, this past season, was done much, much better and more safely than the first year, particularly around the Lobita Bistro corner. Not having that Jersey barrier out to the light, having able a car to, enable a car to make a turn safely was a huge difference. However, going forward, and hopefully. However, going forward, and hopefully having COVID be mostly under control and behind us. I know there'll still be probably masks and things. I don't feel like our town is really structured right now for outdoor dining. That's my personal opinion. I feel that it is kind of a nuisance to have tables in the street and walking between tables, between a building and then tables in the street. I feel like especially at the CVS crosswalk, it was a barrier, a physical barrier. There were so many people. I know that when this was set up, the board even said that we don't have a means to enforce anything. And that's true, you don't. And I believe it was said that it would be our responsibility, meaning residents. And I don't think that should be our responsibility to police tourists coming into town and other people. It just doesn't mix. And I know that sometimes I've asked people driving through who are jaywalking, can you please use the crosswalk? That's what it's there for, instead of being two cars out. And I'm sorry, I think some people are very rude, and I don't know. I'm sometimes just a little bit, who's going to be accost me? Who's going to assault me? I just don't know. I don't, I don't feel like it just promotes a liveliness in the town. I feel it's almost a detriment to the residents that live here, the residents of the village of Rhinebeck or the town of Rhinebeck. I think the tourists probably love it, coming in for the weekend, but then they go home. We have to live here. Parking for me personally is not a problem. I walk down, I walk back. But if I hear time and time again, parking is a problem, I don't understand how then you would remove parking and put people in the sidewalk, in the street. People want to eat in the street, that's their choice, but you are removing parking. I think as a resident, for me personally, it's a nuisance, it's not done well. If it's going to be done, there should be enforcement to follow the rules, to make sure that people can, can get through the north side of East Market Street to get to the municipal lot and not have to pass 15 people waiting outside of Cinnabon or Arroy to get to their car. Some of these places in town do have lovely, lovely outdoor eating areas, they're very fortunate. Arroy has a beautiful side patio. The Village Pizzeria has a backyard. There are, and now with the Pocket Park, I agreed with the East Market gentleman that takeout doesn't taste the same, but at least it is something and you can get it. But I, I hope that if you go forward, this can be opened up. Maybe I'm the only one that feels this way, but as a resident of the village, I just don't find it very welcoming and enticing to come into my own village and eat out on the weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. As I mentioned before, any sort of plans that we do in the future will be not done as quickly as these were. And I, and I, and, you know, and so there will be lots of opportunities to, you know, for a group of people who aren't me to, you know, think about the best way to approach this, if we want to approach it at all, you know, sidewalks, streets, parking, the whole nine yards. So this is very helpful, like, to begin the conversation.
And to do this during this time.
Yeah.
Had to be done.
Yeah.
Definitely had to be done, not a doubt.
Yeah, thank you.
The other thing that I just, and I wonder, a lot of these businesses did get the protection payments that, you know, they got...
The PPP.
Thank you, from the federal government. I mean, they got help from their village, they, I never ate out more.
No, we all did, we all, we all, yeah.
From almost every single restaurant.
Yeah.
Because I felt like it was my civic duty to not cook dinner in front of them. And it was an emergency. But they got help from other areas too.
Yeah.
The whole village, the whole town, the government.
I mean, and I think it was a group effort that kept all of them alive.
And I do think that moving forward.
Totally.
Nice to be a village again.
Yeah, no, and I, and I hear that, thank you.
Yes, Joe, and then we're going to, the last, and then we're going to move on.
Oh, yeah, you know, I think you're against it, I think you're, I think you're in agreement with everybody else, but it just needs to be... You know, some type of order, and there has to be limits. I mean, it was, it was, it was a little ramshackle, you know, as you were saying. But I am not in a position to argue with you. But I thought some of the areas worked. Some of the areas did, yeah. It did, it was a little, you know.
Yeah.
It worked.
All right, yeah, good, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on now. You start the floor, Lydia.
Right, so speaking of long-term planning, we talked in our last meeting about setting up a comprehensive plan committee. There were some still outstanding questions. So I have before the board today a resolution to establish the Village of Rhinebeck Comprehensive Plan Committee. Would you like me to read the full thing?
No, no.
Okay, I'm going to skip to the, I'm going to skip to the relevant part. The first part basically says that we've demonstrated a commitment to comprehensive planning by adopting a comprehensive plan in 1993 and otherwise adopting zoning and land use regulations. It has been a long time since 1993, so it is time to update that plan. So now therefore let it be resolved that we hereby authorize a creation of the Village of Rhinebeck Comprehensive Plan Committee to consist of between seven and 11 members, including members drawn from existing village boards, committees and commissions, and other residents to review the village's existing comprehensive plan, zoning and other land use codes, plans and policies, and recommend amendments to the comprehensive plan. And be it further resolved, the Comprehensive Plan Committee shall conduct an annual review of the comprehensive plan after it is adopted and make recommended changes to the village. And be it further resolved, that the Comprehensive Plan Committee is authorized to convene subcommittees to consider individual aspects of the village's land use policy, planning and regulation, including without limitation, continuation and expansion of the opportunity and practice of outdoor dining in the village, the potential expansion of the village historic district overlaying, housing needs for our entire population with particular attention to our elderly and low-income residents, and individualized zoning amendments that may be referred to the committee by the village board from time to time. And be it further resolved, that the Comprehensive Plan Committee is further authorized to include non-resident experts and business owners on such subcommittees to benefit from their expertise and commitment to the village. And be it further resolved, that all meetings of the Comprehensive Plan Committee shall be open to the public and published in the village's official newspaper with at least 10 days prior notice, consistent with New York Open State Meeting laws. Be it further resolved, that the village board does not hereby delegate any of its statutory authority to the Comprehensive Plan Committee, whose role is advisory only. And be it further resolved, that the outdoor dining task force is hereby disbanded with the village's thanks and gratitude for its service. With the idea that it will be rolled up into this particular committee slash subcommittee process. That is the resolution. The things that I think will be of worth discussion, or at least pointing out for possible discussion, are the membership of seven to 11 people. And the opportunity to have non-village residents sit on the subcommittees only. But those non-village residents have to have either an expertise or a business or some kind of reason why they would be sitting on that committee. So someone like Luciano or Joe, who don't live in the village, but they could, you know, be part of some kind of outdoor dining or something, subcommittee. It's just what came off the top of my head because Luciano was on the outdoor dining task force. So those are, that's the overall thing, and those are the two things that I think will be most contentious, if at all.
So you want to make a resolution and then we...
Yes, I...
Motion?
I make a motion to accept this resolution to create a comprehensive plan committee.
Second.
Thanks, Rick.
All right, so I need a discussion here.
Actually, I think from what I've learned about committees, these broad committees, you have to be able to have people, non-village residents on subcommittees. There's, there are many people with a lot of knowledge and you can be able to turn to them. So I don't think that that should be controversial at all.
Right.
The one question, and this is the purview question, at the tree commission, there's been a fair amount of discussion about how to manage the village's trees. And that is that, right now, all of the burden goes on the homeowner.
Right.
And it's expensive to homeowners.
Yes.
It also means that we have a real backlog of trees that are not in good shape. Would this be in the comprehensive, would this be in the purview to talk about places' funding mechanisms? Or if the village wants to change its law, would this be the purview of that committee?
I believe it would be because the fact that homeowners are responsible for their trees is part of our zoning code. The fact that, I mean, not the fact that they're responsible for their trees, that's kind of obvious, but the fact that they have to, they are both responsible for the trees and they have to beg permission from the village to sort of do anything with them.
Well, the beg is going to ask.
Yeah, right, but, you know, submit a permit, you know, there's like a whole kind of dance between the homeowner and, or the property owner and the village. And yes, that is because it is laid out in our village zoning code in that way. And so that is a question that would be under the purview of this committee.
And you think similar to sidewalks?
Sidewalks, yes, would also be in that purview, and as well as parking, you know? How we think about parking, what we want to do with it. So, I mean, this was a, that list that I read for subcommittees was designed to be incomplete. But yeah, there's all of these questions that have, that have arisen in the last 20-plus years.
Right, and...
Environmental considerations.
Environmental considerations, correct. And is it the board's purview to determine what the subcommittees will be? Or is that up to the chair of the coming Comprehensive Plan Committee?
So this is a village committee.
It is a village committee.
And by appointment, right? So what should happen is people should be appointed to the committee based on approval by the board.
So yeah, so we appoint people to the committee, but which subcommittees the committee creates is up to the committee. We can make recommendations and encourage them to think in certain areas. And what they might end up doing is come up with a priority list. Because there's a lot of questions that we have at the moment.
Right.
But I've gotten, I mean, I have a list of 30 people who are interested in this committee, and I haven't even asked for names yet. So, you know, this, this could be a very active group of people thinking about all sorts of things all at the same time, which, let me tell you, would be wonderful for me because then I wouldn't have to think about all of them at the same time as, you know, we've all experienced. We're all holding a lot of water at the moment. And having some of these volunteers who seem to be very excited about this opportunity would be a great way to kind of share the load a little bit.
I think there's another important aspect in what you read was that, you know, these can be living documents and living code. Because if we put in a review committee to look at this, and I actually got to thank Brandy for this because she's on a committee that does just this, that then can look at this yearly and say, this really should be tweaked, or this could be tweaked, or whatever, is an important aspect as we go forward because we are going to change and there are going to be changes that happen, so.
Yeah, yeah, having it be a living document, I think, is a very important stipulation here.
And so I'm going to refer to Brandy. I mean, the result of what you do, you know, on the committee, and I think it's for Great Barrington, right? That you serve on a review committee.
Right, yeah. We've had our plan in place for eight years. And when you go through the process of a comprehensive plan, you know, you do characterizations, so what do we have now, and then what are our objectives and goals? And some of our very tangible objectives, you know, improve affordable housing or invest in certain infrastructure or provide additional economic development opportunities. So we do on an annual basis, like, how have we done? What things have we done to, like, implement and enable those goals and objectives to be achieved? And our goal is to work through all of the objectives and then say, okay, we're done. Now let's revisit our plan again and start over. So it's the cyclical process.
Right, very good.
So Brandy, our 93 comprehensive plan relied a lot on citizen survey, kind of was like, that was sort of the inception of that. Are you utilizing that at all?
Yes, as you put the plan together, you definitely want to do it to ensure the robust public engagement at a lot of different levels, absolutely.
The only last comment has budgetary, right? Because these things can take a life and then tend to be...
Yep.
You know, you need help.
Constraints and...
Whether it's a land use attorney-type engineering support. I mean, it's one of the reasons we hired Ty and Bond, to bring that expertise with us to the table. But one of the things we need to think about going forward is...
How to constrain that.
How we manage that, and what budget expense should we put forward. Now, we're going to be going into a new budget year and, you know, the budget planning process. So maybe that's one of the things that should be addressed early on so that we could plan for that appropriately.
Yep, I can get some numbers from our various vendors. But I did, one of the reasons why I structured, why I structured the resolution in this way is if the main committee is a little bit smaller, then it, it tends to be a little more effective and it doesn't meander as much. And then also, you know, Brandt and I have spoken about this, but having one person be able to talk to, be authorized to speak to the people who cost money is a good way to control those bills. And I'm, probably that person would be me. Because I also bring the experts, I bring the benefit of being a trained lawyer. So there's some questions that I know how to answer without needing to go to a land use attorney. But I also know how to translate questions, so they're easier to answer in a shorter amount of time. And, you know, we also have access to NICOM, and so there are ways to not have to ask our lawyers for every single question. So in terms of that, we have thought about it. I will get quotes from our various folks, though, to think about with the budget process because this is going to cost money, hopefully, not hopefully, not as much as the town spent, which was an extraordinary amount of money. But, you know, we'll get an idea of what we're dealing with.
Great.
Yep.
Can we utilize Cornell Cooperative and Duchess County too?
Sure.
Duchess County plan, because I think we...
Yeah, absolutely.
In the past, we've used them a lot.
Yeah, so yeah, all of the, you know, free or, you know, volunteer resources that we can recruit, we, you know, I'd like to do that as well.
All right, so we have, is there any other discussion? We have a first and a second, motion, a second? Any other discussion needed? All right, I'd like to call for a vote on, since we had already approved the committee, this is really now approving the definition of...
Passing the resolution, yeah.
Passing the resolution, so. All in favor, say aye.
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 In all unanimity, it's very good.
Great, so I'll be, I'll be working with Martina to send on an email. But if you're interested in participating in this committee, let me know. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on. The next item on the agenda is a fire contract with the town of Rhinebeck. We have an agreement that is hereby, I'm going to read the first paragraph, which will kind of summarize it. You know, this agreement is between the town of Rhinebeck and the village, right? And it really is to, whereas the village, whereas we are duly established in the town, a fire protection district known as the Town of Rhinebeck Fire Protection District, herein designated as district, embracing the territory of the town adjacent to the village of Rhinebeck and encompassing the entire township exclusive of the territory within the Hillside Fire District and Incorporated Village Rhinebeck, together with any decisions or deletions that districts having been established and by resolution duly adopted by the town board. And whereas the village has provided fire protection and emergency rescue squad service to this district pursuant to an agreement with the town, which this agreement by its terms shall expire on December 31st of 2021, right? We now have a new, this is the new contract, which will extend for three years. And I'm going to summarize going through all of the other stuff. But the main point of that is the terms of this agreement shall run for three years, encompassing the town calendar year of 2022, 2023 and 2024. And because we're a village, we're on a different fiscal cycle, our 2021, 22, 22, 23 and 23, 24 fiscal years. In consideration of furnishing, aid and use of the apparatus is herein set forth in the service of the emergency rescue squad, and the town shall pay to the village on or before March 1st in each calendar year, the sum set forth below. 2022, $221,620. 2023, $226,052. And 2024, $230,537. And all funds shall be paid to be solely used by the fire department. Purposes in any sum not expected, not expended for such purpose in any fiscal year shall be deposited into a capital reserve account for equipment to be purchased by the village, which is consistent... a capital reserve account for equipment to be purchased by the village, which is consistent with the contract the last three years. So the town has, you know, the board has had a chance to see this contract and has reviewed it. It was submitted to the town, the town held a, held a public hearing last night. And whereas the town has a contract with the village of Rhinebeck for fire protection services and emergency rescue squad services was expired on December, which will expire December 31st, 2021, whereas the town and village of Rhinebeck wish to continue their agreement pursuant to the attached contract. And whereas on October 12th, the town board opened a duly noticed public hearing and attached proposed contract. Therefore be further resolved that the contract for fire protection services and emergency rescue squad services with the village of Rhinebeck is approved, and the town supervisor, it was authorized to extend it. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution from the town for not, for accepting the fire contract for the fire protective district in the town of Rhinebeck.
Second.
Discussion.
This is pretty close to what we had before as far as tracking the language kind of thing.
The difference, the big difference is zero, you know, the rate increase over three years.
Two percent annual increases.
Yeah.
So where are we at now?
What do you mean?
Do you know what, well, it says 221,620 for 2022. Do you know what this year's is or?
It's going to be 0% for the first year.
0% and then 2% increases?
So this year's 221,620?
Yes. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carried, very good.
Hi.
Vanessa, you're up, on the environmental rights resolution.
Great. So this coming Tuesday, November 2nd, there's an election, and there's a very special, a very special item on the ballot. I'm proposing to the board through this resolution that we show our support in favor of the environmental rights addition to the New York State Bill of Rights. I'd like to read it. I'll read it quickly, don't mind. Whereas the right of New Yorkers to clean water, air, and a healthy physical environment is not given any protection in the New York State's Constitution. And whereas clean water, air, and a stable climate and a healthy physical environment are fundamental to sustaining healthy lives and a healthy economy. Whereas New York State has a long history of environmental protection and leadership to protect every New Yorker's health and the state's physical environment. Whereas both federal and state environmental laws are designed to manage pollution, cleanup, and remediate contamination and conserve natural resources. These laws do not support the notion that clean air, clean water, and healthy environment are fundamental, inalienable rights. Whereas there are still a multitude of issues threatening New York's water, air, natural resources, such as climate change, emerging contaminants such as PFAS and PFOAs. And these are in our drinking water supplies, and poor to failing air quality in many of our communities. Whereas historically under-recognized marginalized populations and communities bear the brunt of these environmental concerns. And whereas the village of Rhinebeck is particularly concerned about protecting, protecting our drinking water source, the Hudson River. Whereas protecting and restoring Hudson River water quality is important for wildlife and recreation and for public health. The quality of the water is under environmental threat from runoffs from pollutants and dumping, sewage outflow, accidental spills of hazardous materials and fossil fuels, terrain supported by barges on the river or by riverside trains, and disruptions from climate change. Whereas the biggest threat to New York's environment is climate change, which is contributing to a loss of habitat and wetlands, erosion and accretion of land, loss of agricultural productivity, loss of property, injury, death from more severe storms and flooding, harmful algal blooms in lakes and ponds. And whereas in recognition that Assemblyman Steve Engelbreit and Senator Robert Jackson have sponsored an environmental rights bill, A1368, S528, that the second passage in New York State Legislature in 2021, which is stated, proposing an amendment to Article 1 of the Constitution in relation to the right of clean air and water and a healthful environment. Whereas in recognition to enact environmental rights amendment in New York State Constitution and the above-mentioned bill that is passed in New York State Legislature in 2021 will now be voted on as part of a statewide referendum this fall 2021. Whereas the Board of Trustees, the village of Rhinebeck, hereby supports environmental rights that passed the New York State Legislature in 2019 and again in 2021 and further resolved that the Board of Trustees, the village of Rhinebeck, supports this ballot initiative where voters may choose whether to add the right to clean air, water, and healthful environment to the Bill of Rights of the New York State's Constitution. Resolve that the copy of this resolution would be forwarded to the municipality's state legislative delegation. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to, to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Thanks, Gary.
Discussion.
So I think I'm going to vote for it, but technically I don't look at it as a fundamental right. It just, but in the context of the New York State Constitution, there's all sorts of things that have been put in there that aren't part of the federal Bill of Rights. It would take me a half hour to explain what I'm talking about, so I'm just gonna, just gonna vote with it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I, when I spoke to Vanessa, spoke to her last week, and I did some exploration, and it seems like it really does have the support of all of the major environmental groups. I think the outstanding concern seemed to be coming from the business community, as they can guess, that they were afraid that it was going to open up for a whole new avenue of litigation. But it doesn't seem like that, that is such, such the problem in having this, having this, this is a, this amendment to the Constitution is a good idea, and we'll help put teeth in, in some additional laws.
I too agree that there is a, a dance in both the state constitutions, all 50 of them, and, and the federal constitution on positive rights versus negative rights and all of this stuff that we could talk about if we were in the middle of a constitutional law class. And, you know, throughout our history, unfortunately, we have been primarily drafting constitutions of negative rights because the people who wrote them had, had rights that they didn't want people to take away from them, instead of the people who were writing them wanted rights that they didn't historically have. And so I think it's an interesting process as our legal thinking changes about how to have our constitutions recognize historically under-recognized populations and needs and give them the rights that they deserve. I don't know if that made any sense to anyone, but I'm just saying it for the record, that I, I agree that turning our constitutions into more positive rights documents are, is a good idea. And I think something like this begins to start that process. And if enough states do it, then maybe the feds will do it. And, you know, the more of that, the better, in my opinion.
Yeah, and, and this wouldn't, New York State wouldn't be the first to adopt this sort of right to their constitution or other states that do have.
It'll provide a guidepost for the legislative branch to create laws that protect clean air and clean water, which I think they already do under the police powers, you know?
Totally.
Because public health is super important, and it's been enforced even, you know, even like the auto emissions standards in California, they had tighter ones in the Fed, and then that was challenged, and the state one upheld, so they have quite a, we have quite a lot of power, but it'll provide a guidepost for the state government.
And I agree with you, Brand, because this is where this is going. Clean air, clean water. We have a value commodity right here, which is the Hudson River, which we depend on for our drinking water. And this will help give the state further guidance on how to manage and protect that, that resource that we so much depend on.
Yeah.
So, all right. We have, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, so passed, very good. Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you, Vanessa.
All right.
It's on the ballot, folks.
Yes.
Vote early, but not often.
Thank you.
Voting's underway, right? Early, early voting is underway.
I voted on Saturday.
So now we have some real business to take care of. If everybody remembers, a month ago, we had a disaster situation occur with a fire at our highway garage where we lost two very valuable trucks, right? And so we've been scrambling in trying to put together a plan to come forward to give us the balance of the resources we need to move forward, to do what our highway department needs to do to function, plow snow, and maintain the village, all right? So with that, you know, the work that's been done, I'm going to turn it over to trustee Lewitt, liaison, to talk about where, what money we got and what money we'd like to spend.
Okay, and I'm gonna, first off, I want to thank the mayor, because we're going to talk about one of his contributions, and also Scott Min, who's our foreman, who did a lot of the legwork to get all this information. So as the mayor said, we lost two trucks, about six weeks ago now?
It was a month ago, yesterday.
Okay. And we did at the last board meeting, we did accept the insurance settlement for the two trucks, which were both totaled for $226,237. In the meantime, both the mayor, Scott, other folks were looking to see how we'll replace these trucks. It turned out that over at Ruggies, there was a Dodge Ram 5500 that was available and is suitable for our needs. Basically, this is not the biggest of the dump trucks. This is a sort of intermediate size, but that size is actually better for plowing the south side of the village, where some of the roads are tighter, some of the turns are tighter. It's also a good size for delivering mulch and other things like that. So that would replace one of our trucks.
Both of those trucks were internationals, right?
I don't remember the model, I don't remember the model.
The ones that burnt down, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's on that sheet of paper right here.
That's okay, that's okay.
Yeah, one was, both were international, yes, that's correct. So, so we, this is from a state, state bid from Ruggies. This would include a dump body and a, an electric sander to go on the back.
And a plow.
And a plow. And one of the nice things about the electric sander is that it should give us even more control over salt and sand distribution as we, as we continue to try to reduce our, our saw use. The second part, and this was surfaced by Scott Min, was the Arkell, let's get there, Arkell Motors in New Windsor had a truck that is being readied for sale. So it's actually going to be built sometime in the spring and hopefully available for April Fool's Day of 2022. It's a Model 2023, if you can believe it. And this is for a.
Model 23 don't make any sense.
Yeah, and I'll be surprised if it shows up on the right date. This is for a much heavier dump truck.
Well, excuse me, we are, the truck is there.
It has to be outfitted.
It just has to need the dump body on, attached to it.
And the other stuff.
So how, how it's a 2023 is beyond me, but you know.
Yes, right. Welcome to the world of automotive, welcome to the world of automotive. And this is a much heavier, much heavier truck. And this truck would both be equipped to be able to do sanding and haul loads. Basically, it has a, it'll have a stainless steel body so that when we do put corrosive things in there, it will last longer than the other bodies that we have. It has a channel for auger to run through it, but when you want to use it as a dump truck, you can actually slide something across that closes it in. Both the mayor and I had long discussions with Scott Min about what the department's needs were, how big a truck they actually need, do they need two big trucks, a small truck, a big truck? This combination of vehicles seemed to be both a good combination of vehicles and an available combination of vehicles, both of which were quite fortuitous.
So is this bigger one a, a more one-to-one replacement of the, of one of the ones that was lost?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. We would be downsizing a little bit from one of the ones that was lost. We will be, continue sizing. And then the other thing is we will probably then surplus one of our smaller, we have a smaller dump truck, we'll probably surplus that, because it's, it's getting time for it to go to.
Got it.
Well, we have, was it truck number 11?
Well, 11 sitting out in the back, right?
It's, it's a two-yard truck that is very old and we've been, it's under repair constantly. So that we would consider surplusing, so it's why do we need two of the mid-sized trucks?
Got it.
So wait, actually, so, no, one thing is that truck doesn't plow. So we actually, our, our total truck count will decrease by one.
Right, but.
But we have, we have the same number of plows. Now, important to this plan is that the mayor was able to contact the town of Gipsy, and if you want to take it from there.
No, we're still working on.
Still working on, okay. So this is, this plan is predicated on, we will be able to borrow another plow, another large plow truck for the winter season.
Right.
Because by the time.
Borrow at what cost?
Zero cost.
Yeah.
Wow. And so then next year, do we have to think about a?
No, 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 no. That, once, once we have both these trucks.
Oh, right, because that one's not ready.
That one will have a plow, right? That both will have plows.
Got it.
One's available now, one's available in March.
Right.
We need a truck to get us through the winter.
So we, we need a loaner, so we have the one from Ruggies coming in, and then a loaner will get us through the winter, and then we'll have a replacement in the summer.
Wow.
How does it look with the loaner? Is it, are you confident, Gary, that we can?
It was promised, but we just have to work out the details.
So I'd like to make a, I'll make two motions. The first motion is to accept a bid from Ruggies, I wonder what's the proper name? Ruggies Subaru Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Chevrolet for the purchase of a 2021 5500 dump truck with a plow and electric sander. The total cost is $85,180.
So state bid?
State bid. Second, thank you. I will add to the discussion that, as I said before, we received $226,000 in settlement. So obviously, we'll be putting our settlement towards us, part of the support.
So all in, all in favor of accepting the Dodge 5500, right, 5500?
Dump truck, plow and sander.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carried, very good.
Okay. The second bid that we have is from Arkell Motors in New Windsor, New York, and it is for an international dump truck with a plow, a wing, and a spreader on it. That truck comes to $304,280.
Whoa. I was going to say, that comes to 219.
Right, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, 219.
Those of them together come to 304.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I looked at the wrong line. That truck is $219,100. That's got to be very expensive, very fast. And so the total expenditure for the two trucks is 304,280. So at the suggestion of Karen, who said that we have adequate fund balance and that it's not really worth it to go bother to bond for $78,000, that we just remove 78,000, $78,43 from our fund balance to cover the additional cost that's not being covered by, by our insurance.
So wait, it's a motion?
I can make an emotion.
Make an emotion and then we'll.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to accept, we'll do money by spending, we'll accept the bid, and we'll do a motion to do the funding.
Actually, you can say a motion and how are we going to pay for it?
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to accept the bid from Arkell Motors for a 2023 international dump truck with front plow, wing, and spreader for $219,100. As part of that motion, I would like the funding for this vehicle to be taken from, actually, you duffed into math here, I had taught me here, the split.
Right, so the insurance covers 226,237, leaving the balance of 78,43.
Okay, that's for, that's for.
From fund balance.
For both trucks.
Allocated from fund balance.
Right, allocated from fund, that's for both trucks.
Right, together.
So I'd like to add to the motion that we allocate $78,43 from fund balance to pay for the cost of that truck. We broke it into two, so it doesn't, the math's a little tough there, right?
Well, but we're buying one of them first, so.
We're buying one of them first, yeah.
We have the funds to buy the one, we approved it.
Right, you approved it, right.
Now we have leftover funds, plus we have the bond, we have the fund balance for the rest.
Right, well, we really.
So I second.
Thank you.
This order is getting more confusing. This order is getting more confusing, we're going to move, we're going to move on, have a discussion.
Right.
Have a discussion here. So everybody understands, we purchased, we got insurance money of two-hundred and-
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six thousand dollars to cover the two trucks that burnt up. We have a purchase price for two trucks, and the end result is, we need to, we're short seventy-eight thousand dollars. And the recommend, the motion made, and seconded is to take that seventy-eight thousand dollars out of our fund balance account, rather than bond or take a loan now for, for that truck.
So remind me, what is our fund balance policy, and where are we?
Our fund balance policy, we put in a policy about two, three years ago, that we wanted to maintain a fund balance of between twenty-five and fifteen percent of the previous year's budget, or the coming year's budget, coming year's budget. And we are actually well over the twenty, twenty-five percent.
Right, yeah, we had that whole conversation during the budget process. And so, and we've already spent some of it on the, on the new lights, or-
Eight, we spent eighty-eight thousand-
Yeah, we spent-
To purchase the lights.
So we've spent down a little bit already, and this would spend it down a little bit more-
Correct.
And get it to where it's supposed to be according to that policy from two or three years ago.
We're still, we're still over twelve.
It gives us the flexibility to spend right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we are over our fund balance policy, correct?
Okay. Okay, that makes sense to me.
What the, sorry.
And, and we definitely need one of these big international trucks, at least one.
Yes.
Okay.
What are the years of those two trucks that met in the?
The ones that, wait, excuse me, the ones that burnt, or the ones we're buying?
The ones that were burnt.
Two thousand and ten and-
Twelve.
Ten and twelve.
Okay, so we're getting shiny new trucks.
We're getting shiny new trucks for seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Right.
That's kind of amazing.
We're not losing seventy-eight, we're getting shiny new trucks.
Right, yeah, right, that's a nice way to look at it.
Yeah, we're spending seventy-eight thousand dollars on two shiny new trucks.
And hopefully, I mean, the other thing is that one of the long conversations we're having is right, right sizing, right, right sizing the fleet, which is important to us as well, both from an economic and an environmental point of view.
Yeah.
So, well, actually, we can have one less truck to worry about.
Yeah. Wow.
And by the way, this is adding electric sanders, which is usually supposedly one-quarter amount of sand, salt and sand mixture, and is, is easier to control, so we're doing environmental thing to help this purchase.
Gracious. Seems like a win-win, win-win-win.
This is-
And the fact that they're here and there's no inventory anywhere is kind of amazing.
Yeah, April's probably-
We're actually picking them up from other people who had ordered them, who-
Who chose not to.
Who chose not to proceed.
Right.
And so we were fortunate enough to be on top of it.
Goodness. All right.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have a discussion. All in favor of this last motion to take seventy-eight thousand dollars from fund balance to cover the remaining balance on truck number two, say aye.
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 You name it, it's very good. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Two trucks.
Two trucks.
Two shiny new trucks.
If it's really-
To add to our two other shiny new trucks.
We can replace them all at the same time.
That wasn't part of the plan, was it?
We should, just mental note, we should update our fleet inventory, our list of all of our vehicles.
When we get them.
Yeah.
We actually do at the budget time.
We gotta deplete our inventory right now.
Yeah, we gotta erase the old ones.
Don't we have to do that for insurance?
Two, two, six.
Yeah, we have a current list.
Yeah, we should have.
So get updated at the end.
Yeah. Okay. I'm gonna move on to the next subject, and the next subject is to pass a resolution to, for the village superintendent of public works and code enforcement to be put on paid leave, paid administrative leave of absence, and make it retroactive to December 11th of 2020. And we're making it retroactive because this has just come to our attention that even though the board had approved and to put our superintendent of public works and code enforcement on paid leave absence, we did not formally pass a resolution, so this is something that we really need to do, and we need to make it retroactive going back to December 11th. So therefore, I'd like, now therefore be resolved that the village of Rhinebeck Board of Trustees hereby approves the paid administrative leave of superintendent of public works and code enforcement effective December 11th, 2020.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
This is how we've been treating this all along, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So-
It's just codifying it.
We're formalizing it with a resolution. The paid leave of absence has been, was approved back in December 11th, and we're now proceeding with just a resolution now. Yeah. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Ladies and gentlemen, that here ends our meeting for October 26th, 2021.
So the comments section, can we?
No, we did not have that on the agenda tonight, because these are-
I forgot something, is it called a different topic? It's, it's in-
All right, so let, all right, so just wait one second. All right, so I will ask the board for permission, Diane, if you will, to do that, to add to the agenda. Is the board okay with going into a public comment session as requested? Aye.
Sure.
Okay.
Let's do it.
You got the floor.
Thank you. So, in the last couple weeks, something came to light that I would like the board to consider. So we have a, a friend in the village who's elderly and also very low income, and she's trying to stay in her home. And I know this is an important topic for a lot of people in the village, trying to make it easier for seniors to stay in their homes. So she's on this very fixed income. Her boiler needs to be replaced. She gets a bill that makes her cry for the estimate on the boiler, and she knows she has to do it because it's dangerous, she has carbon monoxide. But then on top of that, she finds out that she has to come to the village and pay a hundred and fifty dollars for a permit to have her boiler replaced in her basement, and the old boiler to be put right next to it, because she can't afford to take the old one out. So what I'd like to propose to the board is that you consider, for those seniors that are on the enhanced star program, that we waive these infrastructure bills when they have to do work to their houses, like update their electric, it's a hundred and fifty dollars. Update their boiler, a hundred and fifty dollars. It just really seems cruel, and even though it's not a lot of extra money, to them, it's a lot of money.
Yeah. Just, sorry, can you clarify, I just, I didn't quite hear you.
It's really hard to see.
If, if you'd like, you can take it off, but just while you're speaking, but can you clarify how you're suggesting we, we, which elderly population?
So it would be people that are on the enhanced star.
Enhanced star, okay, thank you, I just didn't hear you.
So seniors on low income that qualify for that program, all the paperwork's already in place, you know who those people are, they've already been validated.
Yep.
And it would just be really easy to say, if this was all right, you don't have to pay this.
Okay, thank you.
You can take that up.
Yeah, I'll take that, I'll, I'll, I'll take and run that quickly, obviously, because that's a-
Karen, what's her definition for in the water and wastewater for the reduced plan for seniors?